I don't have keys.
Oh, mics on. All right. I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the governing board. All members except for Mrs. Fisher are present at 6:01. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Frank, can I say one thing before we start?
Sure.
It is National Social Worker Week. We have a social worker from Barry Goldwater here. I would just like to say happy, happy.
Okay, so we are here for a study session on the budget. So I will turn this over to Mr. Miglerino.
Vice President Frank, members of the board, Dr. Whiteheimer, we do have some information to share with you tonight regarding the budget. So this will be officially our third version of the budget that we've created for fiscal year 18, so that's the 2017-18 school year. And even though we just looked at this, what seems to be a couple of weeks ago, there have been, in some cases, there have been significant changes, in other cases, not as many. But we share this information, and then the intent, being that this is a study session, is to gather some input from the board as to what are some of the next steps. Just to put this in some framework, we are targeting to have a salary recommendation through the NST process, hopefully in April, and we would be revising our budget, the current year budget, fiscal year 17, in May, proposing this fiscal year 18 budget in June, and formally adopting it in the one and only meeting that we have scheduled for July. So that's the tentative timeline for the budget, just in kind of a, in a nutshell there. This is the one slide that has not changed since, I think, from even the first draft. And the one thing that's important to note here is that the, that we will be subjected to current year funding for next year. And just as a reminder, it says held harmless in fiscal year 17. Well, we were held harmless in fiscal year 17, but only in fiscal year 17. So we will endure a reduction of students in both, the reduction of students that we currently have in fiscal year 17 and the projected reduction of students for fiscal year 18, all in one year in fiscal year 18. The, okay, I just, the expense changes has, this page has changed a little bit, so I'll just cover those so that we make sure that we're on the same page. So we do have a reduction of certified staff, largely, well, in part due to the reduction of students. The one thing that has changed is we do have the general education staffing. I don't know, I don't want to use the word finalize because staffing is an ongoing process for us, but we are much closer to being at a point where we feel more comfortable with the gen ed staffing than we were even a week or two weeks ago. We don't have any new staffing requests, so these would be above and beyond what our current staffing standards would indicate. And then, new for this draft, comparing it to the last draft we looked at back on February 28, we do have the special education staffing included in this draft of the budget. And then, as kind of a reminder, we keep open enrollment open all the time, sorry, for the redundancy. And so, as, as that may warrant, we might have to consider additional staffing as well, since open enrollment is an ongoing process throughout the year. Just a note on Prop 206, which is the third bullet here, the Supreme Court did render an opinion this week. Unfortunately, it wasn't the opinion that I was hoping for. My personal opinion aside, it means that Prop 206 will, will be in place. And so, we do have a provision for that included in the budget. It's about $150,000. We don't have the leave plan figured out. I don't know that there's going to be a huge financial impact initially from the leave plan, but we do have some work ahead of us to try and work that part of it out. One of the other major changes, there, this happened since the last draft, is there has been a settlement agreement that's been reached on the APS rate case that yielded a reduction in that projected increase. So we were planning on nearly 6% increase from APS or $400,000. That has been reduced by $150,000. The, and then, we've included the benefit committee recommendation in this version, although that is pending the board's final decision in an upcoming meeting. And we have, at the request of the negotiation solution team, we have included professional growth in this version of the, of the budget, as those numbers have become finalized as well. So this is kind of what the lay of the land looks like. Oh, I should mention that late yesterday, ADE published new reports for the month of March, and we have incorporated those into our projections as well. So thanks to Ms. Mock and, and those people that were helping put that together, we were able to do that today, to be able to make sure we had the latest numbers. Did increase the number of students that we were using in the calculation, the statutory formula, which means that the reduction of students you see there went down slightly comparing versions of the, of the drafts of the budget. It also increased the MNO override amount as well, as it is a percentage of the revenue control limit. On the expenditure side, you can see the professional growth there. That's the full weighted amount, meaning it includes the salary and benefits. The professional growth amount is about $77,000-ish dollars, and with the overwhelming majority of that being for certified teachers, well over $60,000 of that, $77,000 is teachers. When we add the benefits to it, it grows up to $100,000. You can see the utility increase now is down to $250,000. As I mentioned before, it was $400,000. And those are, those as long, as well as some of the staffing changes, now that we have included the special ed staffing requests in this version of the budget. So, we're down to about $1.1 million. For comparative purposes, we were at $1.3 million with the draft that we looked at or discussed back on February 28. I believe that number still has some, some opportunity for change, but I don't know that it's going to change, it won't double or be cut in half, I wouldn't think. So, you know, it might vacillate just ever so slightly around 1.1 million. Not included in the budget, and this is a list that NST helped compile as kind of a brainstorming activity back just Tuesday of this week. And we have some costs associated with that that we've provided. It's not intended to be an all-inclusive list. It's intended to be some of the things that, that the negotiation solution team has indicated as interests that they would like to have potentially included in the recommendation that yet, has been yet to be developed. And on top of the list, although these aren't in order, is a salary increase, and we're just showing a representative percentage there at 1%, being just over $1.4 million. That running balance is just adding each, it takes the deficit from the previous page, adds the amount of each of those items to, to give you a running total there. And would love to get the board's input on those items. Some of these, we have not yet costed out because they could be contingent on other decisions. Specifically, the starting teacher pay could be an item that maybe there isn't a financial cost directly to, but it could be a change in how we apportion the starting salary increase, or the increase to the starting salary amount from any raise that's provided to, to staff, as an example. And then, there is a line at the bottom there for other new staffing requests. As I mentioned, those aren't included, as well as anything additionally that the board might provide some direction on that should be incorporated. And then finally, just, just some options so that we could, you know, this is intended for a conversation starter, and I left a couple lines there so that I can even take some notes. Maybe that's not enough lines. We might need to add some additional lines. So these are just suggestions, again, in no particular order. But if we forewent the 2018 CTE textbook adoption, that would be about a million two savings that's incorporated into our budget plans for fiscal year 18. The increase in carry forward was $500,000. We are incorporating the February MNO budget report that we shared with the board at the last meeting, just two days ago. But we still think that there are some additional increases in that projected carry forward, just extrapolating that data out. So an additional $400,000, that was, for comparative purposes, that was a half a million dollars when we looked at this back in February, on February 28. New, added to the, to the line is additional use of cash accounts, again, as a suggestion. The community education account has maintained a healthy balance. That is a potential possibility. Just a footnote there, that there are, we have utilized the community ed cash account as a means to balance other budgets, but is it a non-sustainable decision that would be considered? Because once that money is taken, it's, there's no guarantee that it will exist in future years. And then, further capital allocation reduction of a quarter of a million dollars. So just those options alone that we've kicked around, just over $2.3 million, that would give us some means of being able to balance the budget and maybe consider some of the options that were on this previous page here. And I'll leave this page up because I'd love to get the, the board's input specifically on these items, to see if there's anything that's not included here that should be, or anything that, that the board feels strongly about that should be included in our plans as we move forward through the budget process.
I do have a question. Mr. Miglerino, how many years have, has the district utilized funds from the community ed, from community ed?
President Fisher, Ms. O'Brien, we've, I can speak to the last two years specifically that, so in fiscal year 15, we used a half a million dollars of community ed cash. In fiscal year 14, we used a million and a half in, in cash from community ed. And one of the things I failed to mention, there were some questions that we received regarding, that were budget-related questions, and I provided kind of a printout of what was included in Friday's update, just as a reference if we needed to. There's a document that, at the very top, it says, Deer Valley Unified School District Budget/Cash Balance History.
Say that again.
Deer Valley Unified School District Budget/Cash Balance History. And about, a little more than midway through the page, you'll see a section titled unrestricted funds and community school is there. So you can see the fiscal year 14 ending balance of $3.4 million. We take a $1.5 million from that to balance that year, so we end up with $2.2 million in '15, a half million dollars between '15 and '16. And we don't have any community ed cash incorporated in the 17 budget currently. From this line, there's a, there's a community, a community school line that's part of our five cash funds, and so it is, it is one of the five cash funds. So that will be found under the, right under the heading where it says Cash Balances District Office. Those funds are there, and you'll see community schools shown there as well. That's the district's percentage of community school amount. That's one of our five cash funds. It should be noted, there's, just to draw attention to this, under the schools' cash accounts, there's also an unrestricted community schools line item as well. That's the percentage that the schools receive for hosting those programs on their campuses.
What does the additional school-based support, what is that for? The second line down.
That's a great question. President Fisher, Ms. Tweedy, that is a request by our building leadership team for a revised staffing model for assistant principals and teacher on assignments at the schools.
So what would that look like?
It's the addition of some additional time for assistant principals, as well as some teachers on assignment at specific schools. Included in their request is to extend the contract for the assistant principals and TOAs, to extend it longer than it currently is, to add an extra month, I believe, to their-
To 10-month?
A 10-month contract, I believe.
So the 10-month admin would be 11-month? Is that what that is?
Just the TOAs? Yeah, so I'm sorry, it's a nine-month TOA to a 10-month TOA.
Oh.
And that was what they sought in lieu of their, when we were doing this last year, correct? In lieu of them receiving the increase that others received, that's what the administrators wanted. So that's what that line is.
Okay, no, I was just trying, and so how many schools, how many schools would get additional support with that? Four schools?
I believe it is, but I have the information in front of me.
Ms. Fisher, Ms. Tweedy, the additional schools that would receive the support would be Arrowhead with a .5 TOA. Desert Sage would qualify for a .5 TOA, and Norterra Canyon currently has a .5 assistant principal. .5 is our base staffing for a K8 campus. With the rubric, they would qualify for a 1.0 assistant principal.
Could you please repeat that information? Thank you.
Desert Sage would qualify for a .5 TOA. And Arrowhead would qualify for a .5 TOA.
So what's the, what, what's the, wait, what are the other, what were the other schools? I apologize.
Those two are the TOA additions, and then Norterra Canyon was a 1.0 assistant principal. Currently, they already have a .5 assistant principal.
So they go from .5-
They would go up to a 1.0, and the other two campuses have no support right now, and they would both qualify for a .5 TOA.
Thank you so much.
No, I was just curious, then, how, how did they decide which schools got support? Because there's still some schools that won't have extra support then. I'm just trying to figure out how we're deciding.
The building-level leadership team took input from all of their stakeholders. They spent a good, a good amount of time on that. They met with Human Resources and Administrative Leadership Services to take a look at the rubric, revised rubric from last year. They agree, it was agreed with Human Resources and with the team that the rubric last year was not the most, was not the best rubric that could be used for qualifying for additional support. And so it was revised, and with that revision, three more campuses would qual, would receive that support.
Was it, is it student count then? Is that, is that-
Student count is one of the qualifiers.
Okay.
It would be helpful to, I guess, have that rubric so we could compare it to what the prior one was.
We can provide that.
Well, I guess, what does, what does equitable performance pay mean? I just want to understand what the items mean. I don't-
Certainly, that, I mean, I think that's great for us to go through. There's a request from the Deer Valley Education Association team to ensure that all folks that are covered under the, the, what we call their representation, to receive the same performance pay as if they were getting classroom site fund performance pay. There was a court of appeals ruling that determined that certain positions could not be eligible for classroom site fund monies, and therefore, they're not eligible for the classroom site fund performance pay. They are, in our case, eligible for performance pay as we have a separate program for all other employees, but it's a reduced amount. So this would make everybody that's represented by the Deer Valley Education Association and the position matrix of, that we have, bring them up to the amount. It's just, this just represents the difference between the district's performance pay amount and what the classroom site fund would have generated. It should be noted that the Deer Valley Education Association also mentioned that they want to make sure that there's a comparable requirement for them to earn that, not just that they would receive the same dollar amount, but that there would be a similar process that they would go through, that teachers have to go through to earn the, the funds.
What positions?
So counselors, speech, OT, PT, a lot of those positions.
Okay.
That was just what I was going to ask. I did receive feedback from some counselors about that particular issue, so.
Just to that point, so that would be certificated employees, like, is there a complete list of who is in addition to teachers?
We can, we can certainly provide the employee representative-
Instead of going, is that nurses? Is that counselors? If you have a comprehensive list, that would be very helpful.
Just to that point, so that would be certificated employees, like, is there a complete list of who is in addition to teachers?
We can, we can certainly provide the employee representative-
Instead of going, is that nurses? Is that counselors? If you have a comprehensive list, that would be very helpful.
Ms. O'Brien?
I think I know the answer to my question. Okay. Because this is a public meeting, we are taking public input. Ms. Leva, can state your name for the record?
Yeah, Maria Leva, president of DVEA. So to this point, actually, I was going to talk about this, this, right now, the performance pay for the people who are not eligible for a classroom site fund, their performance pay plan is greatly different. Not only is their amount different that they receive, but the conditions under which they work to receive their performance pay is not currently equitable to what teachers have to do in order to receive their performance pay. There's a matrix, and there's a committee and everything like that. I would just, just remind you, you know, respectfully, that we've gone roughly three-quarters of the year now where they're operating under their previous plans, where they set their own goals and they have to do one or two things. I'm not sure, I've never seen their performance pay plan or what they have to do for it, but I know for the teachers, it's on the portal, it's everywhere. So I don't know how this is determined. I don't know how that $200,000 amount, because that's roughly 100 people.
Can I, can I remind everyone, including us, that we're planning next year's?
Right.
This is not this year's. They may have done whatever for this year.
Right.
That's under, we'll have to address whatever happened for this year. This is for next year.
Right, and in NST, according to the notes that I gathered, the amount that was given to us was around $66,000, I think. So I would just, if everybody gets roughly $2,000, that's 100 people we're budgeting, so we're wondering who these 100 people are, because there's roughly 40-something counselors, 48, I think.
Ms. O'Brien?
Just wondering how this amount was reached, how the $200,000 was-
When Maria has done, I just-
Yeah, we'll be able to provide a list, but it's, I think there's 33 speech positions. So there, there's, and it, that is correct. It was-
1.0 and all that.
Correct. So it's all based on FTE that this is, and, and as, as it's noted here, this is estimated, because our performance pay system that we have currently, that, that these positions are currently on, is 2% of their salary. In some cases, when we talk, start talking about psychologists and positions like that, 2% might even be as much as the classroom site fund, potentially. So, so that, kind of a varying amount when we just extrapolate based on FTE.
Yep. Ms. O'Brien?
And I, I think too, that going forward, I appreciate anecdotal information and, and everything, but before we're going to say they do one or two things, I'm being very respectful now, we don't know what they do, or what's asked of them. So I would like to be respectful in the fact that, since the district has funded all those non-funded positions with the equitable performance pay, or whatever we're going to call it, just want to make sure that we start off, and we're very polite and respectful, and we find out exactly what's asked of each employee group before we think that they're getting something for nothing, because there's nobody sitting in this room that works, that doesn't have a lot of work to do, or more than they might think.
And if it would be the pleasure of the board, I can just run through the, these, just to provide a little more detail, I apologize. We've been working on these for a while.
Did you want to speak to the same point, or you want us to go ahead on and add a different point?
Part of this, part of what I have to say is the same point.
Okay.
But just part of it.
Go ahead and state your name for the record.
I could start that. Marcy Morrison, and I'm a social worker over at Barry Goldwater. Thank you for doing this. I didn't really know about this until this year. This is my fifth year, so I'm glad this is happening. Just to, kind of piggyback on the, on the SLO goal, as a social worker, I, you know, and we do get 2% of our base salary, by the way, so I don't know, I know psychologists might have a higher one than most other people, but social workers are also included in that. There's two of us in the district. And if I'm doing my math right, even if a psych is making about $60,000, 2% of that is about $1,200, doing my math correctly, I believe teachers can make about $2,500 possibly, $2,000? Okay. So that's the highest end of probably everybody, you know, for the base pay, are the psychologists. So really, they're, they are making about maybe $1,200 or so, give or take, of base pay. So I know my check is about $600 when I get it. I work really hard for my SLO goal. I actually take all freshman girls, and just because I'm working in a school with like 1,800 kids, and I'm the only social worker there, so everything else that I do, I'm trying to fit in the SLO, but I'm taking every freshman girl that goes into our in-school suspension, every single day that they go into in-school suspension, and I'm working with them to do a skill to try to help them either socially, emotionally, behaviorally, whatever it is that has gotten them into in-school suspension, and trying to work with them so that they're not in in-school suspension again. Last year, I had 70, 75% of the girls that I worked with that did not go back into in-school suspension again, as opposed to 45% that had no, no intervention whatsoever. This year, I'm just working out my stats right now, so I'm, I'm just kind of giving you that in a nutshell. We, I do a lot of statistics, you know, to show what is actually going on. So I'm just trying to give you kind of an example of, of what I do as a social worker. I know everybody has their own, the counselors have their own thing, and so, everyone's got their own. And it's, it's very rigorous what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to match our, our school goal of getting, trying not to get Ds and Fs in the area of math and English, and trying come here and say? Or do you want me to wait?
If it's fitting in this spot, you can put it here, or if it's further on in the conversation, it's up to you. This is, it's an open meeting, but we're, we kind of try and stay on where we're at in the agenda.
Okay.
So is it, if it's in this area where we're talking about this equitable performance pay, if it's that, yeah, by all means.
If it's in the area of what? I didn't hear you.
Right now, we're here on this performance pay. We're talking about the performance pay.
Okay. That's all I had to say about performance pay. I'll wait my turn for the next time.
Okay.
Okay? All right, thank you.
Mrs. Fisher, could I make a request that we let Mr. Miglerino go through the entire list before we hear any more comments?
Yeah, unless we have something significant that pops up, absolutely. That's why I was.
Appreciate, no, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Pause it to the subject matter. Jim, if you want to continue?
Please. The, the next item on here is the front office staffing recommendation. So we had a committee, a work team, that was looking at staffing, front office staffing at our schools. This represents their priority requests for front office staffing, which is revisiting the model to include a minimum standard at our high schools, regardless of the number of students, again, because there are certain activities that are inherent, no matter how many kids are at a school. It provides for an additional criteria for a Title I campus, and, oh, and ensures that the staffing would remain the same even if the, if there was a change during the school year. So we have adjusted staffing during the year in our front offices if, if something has changed in the staffing model. So this would give them some certainty based on, based on the information. So again, there's a work team that developed that recommendation, and we can certainly provide that as additional information. The nursing compensation, Ms. Moffett worked with our nurses in the district and came up with a, some suggestions on how to handle the, or some of the questions and concerns that the nurses brought to our attention. This would be to create a hard-to-fill addenda for all of the nursing positions in the district. I think last, at last report, I believe there were four vacancies that we had amongst the nursing positions at this, even at this point in time, and then to provide a halftime release for the, our lead nurse in the district so that she can coordinate some of those activities. Currently, she does not receive a release time, but does receive an addenda for the additional time she puts in to coordinate that, those activities. The additional lunch monitor time, kind of morphed out of the front office staffing work team, as well as some additional input that was received by a couple of different sources, including the Deer Valley Building Leadership Team, to be able to have enough time to cover the lunch period at our elementary schools. And so this was a recommendation for, to make sure that six hours of lunch monitor time was allocated to each of our K6 and K8 campuses. And then, and, and they do, they did include that as kind of an appendix to their recommendation, so we can share that information with the board as well. The seventh and eighth grade level science, math, science and math hard-to-fill addenda, because of the way the certification is received, those teachers can, certainly can teach in, in those grades, the certification's seven through 12. And so a request was made when this hard-to-fill item was considered last year, that the hard-to-fill addenda would be included for all positions, not just upon hiring. A request was made at that point in time for the seventh and eighth grade math and science teachers to also receive that $2,000 hard-to-fill position, or hard-to-fill addenda by position. Starting teacher pay, we just know that with the shortage of, of teachers and some open positions, and certainly trying to remain competitive, that we'd like to do something with the starting teacher pay to make sure that we can do all that we can to recruit new teachers to the profession, while maintaining the fact that we want to keep the, keep some order in the hierarchy of salaries, so that make sure they don't leapfrog over any existing staff. The, during the negotiation solution team, there was some discussion about revisiting the classroom site fund, maybe the allocation of the classroom site fund. We provided some of that detailed information in the Friday update as well. The, specifically to Vespa, as well as certainly the district administration, is looking at the compensation compression that Prop 206 is causing. I think at one point in time, there was even an anecdotal story about, we could have supervisors that are making the exact same money as the people that they're supervising when we get to $12 an hour, as there are ratcheted increases in that piece of legislation, or, I'm sorry, that referendum that was approved by the, by the voters. And then other new staffing requests, as we've mentioned, as I mentioned earlier, that is just a list of, of requests that have been made to consider where there might be a need for additional human capital to continue to operate various aspects of the district, and that has not been finalized at this point. The note at the bottom, just as a disclaimer, we have not, NST did not finalize a list, we just did some brainstorming, and certainly this does not include any sort of legislative changes that we might need to look into. For example, maybe mandatory recess could be, I'm just hypothetical.
Does anyone have ideas about where we could cut over $3 million to spend this?
I'm sorry, is that question directed?
I guess if we do all these things right, we'll have a $3 million deficit, or am I reading this wrong? The running balance?
I'm sorry, yeah, President Fisher, Ms. Tweedy, yes, if, if, if we were to enact all of these things, we had, we would have a $3.7 million deficit.
Do we have an idea of other areas we could cut to do these things?
We certainly didn't discuss any ways that could be cut. I mean, we, we have a list that we used for budget reductions from, from before, when we were in that mode of having to make reductions. We could revisit that list again. I will tell you that we endured that list for many years, and consequently, the only things that are left on that list are things that I would consider, that most, most people would consider to be undesirable, like increasing class size, or, you know, changing an expectation that has been created, eligibility distance for transportation, nurses. I hesitate to even mention any of these, because.
No, that, that wouldn't be an option to do these things. I, I was wondering if we had, obviously, we couldn't adopt a budget with a $4 million deficit, so I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how we would honor these requests.
I'm just curious, and forgive me if this sounds, sounds naive, but what thought has been given to, not necessarily cutting a whole program or, or something like nurses, which, which we can't do, but looking at line item by line item, where are there areas that we could sort of trim, not that we have a lot of fat, but sort of trim the fat, rather than taking away an entire something, like nurses? And I guess the example I'll give is, is the board budget. I asked what the board budget was, and it had been increased last year. So how much of that money has been spent? Is there some money there? Can we reduce our budget for starters? Professional development? How much is spent on out-of-town travel to conferences? I know conferences are valuable, but when we're looking at this kind of a budget, is that something that we could give up? Where people might go to a conference every other year and you send one person, rather than several people going to, for, and I'm just throwing this one out, a math conference every year. And I, I'm throwing that out there, I'm sure it's been thought of, but I know in my personal budget, a couple of years ago, when I was still an employee here, and I, I was running a deficit every month, I couldn't cut out car insurance, but I could cut out the comp and collision, and I went through and just reduced small amounts off of different items to make up the shortfall. And, and I'm just wondering, has that approach been looked at? I mean, it does, it is kind of tedious to go through, department by department, but I'm wondering if that might be less painful than looking at doing away with nurses, or, you know, the year we had to do away with librarians, or some of the, the really unfortunate cuts that, that the district has had to made over, make over the years. Is that a possibility?
To your point, I was even, have we considered putting out a survey to all the schools and, and all the departments, and asking if there are things they thought they could live without to save money? Like what would be their ideas? That, that they wouldn't miss horribly.
Obviously, you're not going to find $4 million in the board budget. Maybe you would take out $5,000, you know?
You're not even going to get the paper supply.
You know, I, I don't know, but it's, it's, it's along the idea of small cuts adding up. So that's, I don't know, my thought.
Another thought I had, I thought, in what I requested today, that there's a large amount of money paid in addendums, and I'm not sure, I would like to see us just as, as a whole, kind of get a unified standard for, for what constitutes professional responsibilities, and then have it, you know, outs, within your contract if you're an exempt employee, and, and what would constitute extra pay, and then have that applied the same way, just a universal one we would or would not pay in addendum, and if there's any possibility to reduce in that area.
To Darcy's point, do we have that already? Jenna?
I apologize, I didn't hear the question.
Or Jim, I'm sorry. Do we, do we happen to have a rubric for paying addenda? When and why?
So, President Fisher, Ms. Ordway, we do have expectations for some of the addenda positions. I can't say for all, so we've been slowly working on creating, I'll call it a job description, for lack of a better term, that establishes the expectations for the, for the position and for the addenda. And it's not for all of them that we have that in place. Some of them, we have assumed that there's a, an understanding for, the head football coach, we believe is, you know, not one that we necessarily have ironed out, but we certainly could, because we know how much is involved in some of those addenda.
Right. I, I think, Darcy, you might be referring to, if I am a math teacher, and I get addenda for, why would I get the addenda for like six-fifths? I know I get that one because I'm teaching over the period, but that.
I, I, yeah, just more clarification, so for example, if, what standard do we use? I, I'm not talking about a whole nother job. I mean, if you, you know, you do a grant program, it's a whole nother job, or, you know, you're, you're a coach, that, that's a whole separate jobs. But if you say, take a typical work day, there are things that happen where people do extra days of work, and, and, example, the admin, that's 10 months, they have to come in on the summer and hire people, but that doesn't fall outside of their contractual obligation, even though they're going in and working extra days, then they're not compensated. So I, I guess I'm trying to figure out, I would like to see professional responsibilities just defined, and then if it is outside of your professional responsibility, so when we pay addendums, because we're paying a lot of money in addendums that maybe could be used to.
Couldn't, couldn't we, I start with what addendums we are paying and classify them? You know, put, put all the coaches together, so we see, you know, get an actual report. Here's all the coaches, here's all the, they're doing, coming in on a Saturday for something, or they're on a committee, or they're serving on a, you know, they have an F schedule, I don't know if you guys call them F schedules here, but that would be like, band is an F schedule, or, or chess, some, just certain ones of it, set criteria. Maybe if we could get a picture of what that even looks like?
Like department chairs, that sort of thing.
Right. There, isn't a dependent addenda for what, and then we could at least kind of narrow it down to where, yeah, these we know right off the bat, they're an expense that we expect, and they're additional or outside of, because it's, we, we, we see the addendas when they come through, these are IBN-approved, these aren't, but. But the big picture of them all.
And we don't necessarily know why this position, I mean, obviously with a football coach, I think, or, or a band director, people can, you, you can figure that one out, but there's lots of others that, I wouldn't know why that person was receiving an addenda, or why they were receiving that specific amount. So I, I think that's an excellent suggestion, Mrs. Fisher.
Or if it's outside of the scope of their position even. Because, I mean, we don't know, we have a name and an addenda, and they're doing this, but we don't know what's their day job compared to what this addenda is. I, I think that would go a long ways to help us even identifying, are there addendas being paid for additional hours for their current job? I mean, the answer may well be no, but we don't know that. So could we trim there? I, I think that may be a way for us to at least look at it.
Right.
Ms. Leva?
Maria Leva, I appreciate all the discussion on the addendas, because yes, there are addendas negotiated and, and non, and if you ask some teachers, if that survey were to go out to some teachers, I think they would know that there are people receiving non-negotiated addenda that appear as non-IBN in the board book, such as like a webmaster, or clubs, or other things where they're paid out of other funds, and we, there's no accountability there, whether or not it's happening during the school day, like during their preps, or outside of the school day. So I appreciate looking at that. An example is, like, the head coach is negotiated.
Ms. Ms. Leva, can I just caution you again, though? When, when we say a blanket statement, I, I will tell you someone who is doing a webmaster, and that's not part of their job, that is a significant time, so we, we can't assume that they're not working for the addenda they're being paid.
But I think I prefaced it.
Just because they're not IBN, that's, I'm just, I just caution you not to pick on a group that they're not valid.
Well, I appreciate not having words put into my mouth, but I think I prefaced it by, if we were to put out the survey, I believe some people would say that. I'm, again, I, I don't know that that is actually happening. We would have to put that survey out to the schools to either disprove or, or, or know that that's happening. But an example is, the head coach is negotiated, head football coach, but the defensive coordinator, offensive coordinator, special teams, that's non. So just little things like that. I, I just want to say, I appreciate your discussion on the addenda and, and looking more into that. Thank you.
Ms. Hardaway.
And I, I don't think a survey would be helpful before the facts would be put in, into some kind of a file for us to see.
I agree. I think we need to see what they're doing for the addenda and when. Because a lot of times when you, when you question, someone may say, I mean, I could say that, you know, such and such other board member didn't do this or that. Well, I don't know that, I wasn't with them when they did or didn't do it. It would have to be kind of an idea of what that.
Well, and, and another thing to consider in that, is are some of the addendas, addendums good opportunities to, to give people professional responsibility hours towards their performance pay? I don't know about the non-certified, if they have professional responsibility hours, but could that be offered too? On, on some of the things that adden, I, I, I mean, not if it's a huge amount, I mean.
Right, but if it's a possibility, I mean, they're, I think that's a good idea. Ms. Moffett?
Ms. Leva did point out, I was just also going to point out, that, that we do have different types of addenda, and some of them that have been talked about tonight are negotiated and listed in our certified manual, and we do have a clear guideline for what the expectations would be around those addenda, and they typically are reviewed or renewed at the end of the year. And then there are coaching addendas, and those too meet that type of criteria, and then schools have some autonomy at deciding what type of addenda they would like to put forward for an, anyone on their campus to perform a duty outside of their job, and that is submitted to the district office, and, and we are currently working on putting together criteria for that. So we could categorize those types of addends, I think, based on how you're asking to see them.
So that would be a campus administrator that would say, you know, this is X amount of budget, I want to use it towards this, and then they would determine that. Okay.
Kim, to your point, and Jenna, that would be their, it would be the campus, the sites budget that they would be paying the addenda for.
That is correct.
That's correct. So, that would be good to know. I have another question. If I can, if it's time to change topics a little bit. Back to the. If it's time to change topics a little bit, back to that page that has the cash balance history, Mr. Miglerino. In the cash balances for schools, there's the unrestricted funds. What is civic, what is the civic center fund?
Um, I'm, I'm sorry, we did use the technical, uh, name here, that is facility rental, um, proceeds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the auxiliary operations fund?
Um, I, I like to refer to that as the gate receipts.
Sounds fancy.
And in, in it being unrestricted, that means that it can be used for whatever the campus?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't gonna get my hand slapped when I make this comment. Our former internal auditor does not like the words, and that's why they're in quotes, unrestricted and restricted, because, uh, she would tell me that there are restrictions on the auxiliary operation, uh, uh, account, that there technically are, but once all those are satisfied, then the monies can be used for other, uh, other means. So, um, yes, you have to meet all the obligations of the activity that's generating the revenue, and then after that, you can use it for any other legal means, so.
If you have football gate receipts, then you must first meet the necessary needs for having a football team and all of that stuff, and then beyond that, there are some, flexibility with the remaining funds?
That is correct.
Okay.
Slightly different, but. Uh, well, I'm just thinking with, when you talk about auxiliary funds, it just, it really depends on how the district's taking it in and, and the, the restricted versus the unrestricted, because in your auxiliary operations, I will tell you, your gate receipts will never, um, cover the cost of your sports programs.
Okay.
Um, the, the gate receipts, um, that I manage generally is, there are shortfalls about a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars per year towards athletics. So it's generally has to come from MNO or something, but there's others, if, I'm assuming if we, I don't know that we have class fees or there are others, sometimes this is used for supplies, so what, even though they're unrestricted, that doesn't mean they're not earmarked. Um, and then the restricted, the civic center, those, those also fall under, um, I like the way Heather makes you put restricted and unrestricted in parentheses. It's, it's, and sometimes it's tiny, it may have to sit somewhere for X amount of time after something is no longer needed and then be able to be moved. So it's, it's, it can be deceiving, I just.
Thank you.
And while we were talking about addenda, I thought I'd just, uh, uh, make sure, and I did not provide this in the, the packet I created for you at your, at the day this evening, but the addenda recap, uh, hopefully you guys had a chance to see that. Um, we're talking about six million dollars worth of addenda, the prescribed addenda for that, uh, two point three of it is, um, prescribed via the certified manual, um, and then two point seven of that is hard to fill addenda, so that's in salaries that we are paying for those, uh, positions, leaving a balance of one million dollars for non-IBN addenda. I did a quick look and, um, over two hundred and seventy-five thousand of that one million dollars is e-school addenda, that's how we contract with that. So, um, you really start whittling down to a, a much smaller number as you look through, uh, the details of the, of the addenda.
So essentially, even though it says addenda, you're actually paying for our e-school teachers. It's, it's, that's their actual salary, it's not just an addenda.
Right, we just pay it via addenda because they're typically employed with us and then they moonlight, if you wanna let me use that term.
Um, I guess another question would be, how much capital money was moved to MNO in this, or, how much MNO money was moved to capital and for what purpose in this budget?
So our capital budget, uh, projected in this is still at four million dollars, um, for, uh, for next year. And that's assuming, again, that we don't, uh, take advantage of, I'll call it option A here, uh, or D.
So I have a question. Can money, money can be moved then from capital to MNO and from MNO to capital?
President Fisher, Ms. Frank, yes, the money can be, uh, moved between, uh, MNO and capital. It's part of what's now referred to as district additional assistance, and it can be used in either, um, either category. Once our budget is set, though, um, it is, um, I won't say it's stuck there, but it's allocated to that particular purpose.
So once we approve a budget, then we can't shift money around?
Uh, you have to approve a, a revision to that budget.
Okay.
But, but so what's the plans for the money that is in, that, that, with the four million right now allocated, what are the plans for that capital money?
Um, and I'll just speak in kind of generalities, I believe it's about a million two, as you can see, for the textbook adoption, um, about a m, uh, million dollars in, um, or just under a million dollars in, uh, school allocation. Um, and then a million eight, I believe, is the, uh, software renewal licenses.
Are all the softwares that are being renewed, are they still being currently used in the classrooms? I mean, are there any softwares that are good candidates not to renew?
Uh, President Fisher, Ms. Tweedy, yes, uh, that, that is part of an annual process that they review, uh, and we have taken some things off the list, uh, due to their lack of, uh, lack of use. Uh, for, just as an example, we used to have a online tutorial, uh, software that we offered to employees to be able to, um, learn some, uh, specific skills, but it was underutilized, so, uh, about two years ago, we, uh, canceled that subscription through the process of the re, uh, re, annual review process that we go through.
Ms. Best? Hi there, uh, Ms. Fisher and, uh, Dr. V. I just wanna talk to you about a few things. First of all, when we are talking about saving money, as the president of the PTSA for two years and on the board for several years over at Terramar, one of the things that I really got to do is, uh, meet some of the teachers, and I was finding that a lot of those teachers were going to training that they really didn't wanna go to. So sometimes they were, they were considered new teachers in the district, but they really weren't new teachers. Some of them had been teaching five, 10 years, and they were required to do a certain amount of training. So if you're thinking about things that maybe you could help cut, that may be an opportunity, I'm not really sure, but I'm not sure about the, the required training. Not only are you paying for the training, but you're also train, paying for the substitutes, so that may something, be something to, um, to think about. But, um, what I really wanted to talk to you guys about was what we're doing to make sure that we're properly funding the programs that we have in place currently. So, um, on the PTA, we are constantly asked to help fund our schools. So just this last week, we've been asked for fifteen thousand dollars over, for four different things at Terramar. And it's really concerning because we have to figure out what it, what makes sense. So we have all these different programs, we have Mandarin and now I think there's French going in at Norterra, and there's technology programs going in at Norterra, and all these different programs. And to me, we're not funding the programs that we have, so I'll give you an example, band, okay? Band has not, they do not get any capital for equipment. So we just paid forty-one hundred dollars, four one zero zero, for a new tuba for our school. We are the academy of the arts and we do not fund our, our band program at all, or our music program or any of our other programs. They don't have a specific budget for our school. So it's, to us as a PTSA, we're doing our best to make lots of money and we do okay, but we're not funding our schools. So we have to figure out, instead of having all these new programs and figuring out what we're doing, I know we're talking about, okay, how are we gonna cut, but what are we gonna do to fund band? Band is no longer, you can't get tax credits like you used to be able to do, so you used to, if a band director, um, they could send out an email and say, hey, we need tax credits, we're wanting to buy a new flute or whatever, and they could go and ask their families, and hopefully they would do that. And, but they can't do it anymore because the rule is, it has to be for, the majority of it has to be done for after-school extracurricular activities. So in the, what, the district, from what I understand in the past, what they have done with the band is they've just kinda left it up to the band directors to try to get that funding, and there's no more funding. So this is at the high school level, this is at the grade school level, and, um, to me, it's, it's an awful lot to ask a PTSA to pay forty-one hundred dollars for a tuba in order to support our school. So there's been no capital in the last three years, um, for our school, for, um, any band equipment. So literally, they have like a very small, I think they have to get it from the principal, um, and budget, and they have to get equipment, like, uh, things replaced or whatever. So my request is, we have to find a way to fund our programs that we have right now, and as long as the state is saying that band and music and art and these programs are a key part of our education, that's what we should be taking care of. I'm not really sure why we have French, but, okay, that's besides the fact. So, um, I guess my, my, oh, by the way, we also, as a PTA, last year, we funded new cleaning equipment, okay? Literally, you know, the waxers at Terramar, because there was no money in capital, so they, our principal asked us to pay for new cleaning equipment because our school hasn't had cleaning equipment. We bought new drapes at our school, we, we've bought a little bit of everything, and to me, it makes no sense that we're asking them to do it. We just spent two thousand dollars for the music department to have new chairs, because there's no capital at the school. So I guess my thought is, is when you guys are doing it, and it should go right to those departments, don't leave it up to the principals, let those departments have a certain amount of budget in order to support the schools. So that's what I have.
So I, I do have a question somewhat related to Ms. Best's comments. Um, looking at the FY18 budget, are there any program expansion plans or any new programs included in that budget? I, I didn't see, but anything?
President Fisher, Ms. Frank, the, uh, um, the only additions that we're showing here would be anything that was, uh, driven by existing program. So, uh, a, a third grade student rolls into a fourth grade classroom, um, and we then take a look at, um, do we have the, the resources, the teachers and that, to be able to accommodate for that? Uh, that's true in both gen ed as well as any, uh, existing program that we have, uh, that, that was, uh, being retained.
Thank you.
Ms. Ordway?
Jim, uh, with, um, Ms. Best's, uh, reference to the fine arts, are we not still having a cycle for replacing band equipment?
Uh, President Fisher, Ms. Ordway, we don't have a program, a spec, a specific program for replacing, um, uh, band equipment, uh, any longer. We did as part of a initiative with the two thousand and five capital override, uh, but when that was not renewed in two thousand and twelve, um, there weren't any proceeds available to, to do that. We have made allocations, capital allocations to the schools since that time, um, and have asked the schools to, uh, consider all the needs on their campus when they, um, allocate those funds.
So when they, um, send in a request for capital, can it be, um, band equipment? You know, how they can send a request and if we have money for a ca, well, I guess we don't really have money for it, but maybe we have a little bit somewhere, i, is, is equipment, uh, even gonna be on that, that list that they could ask for?
Um, ju, just, uh, just to be clear, uh, we used to have a process that we called essential capital requests, and we still honor those and when there's a kind of a health and safety issue at, at a campus. But since we've been able to provide an alloc, when we had no allocation to the schools, uh, they had to make a request through the essential capital request process. Since we've been able to provide an allocation to them, um, we feel that they are best suited to know where the needs are on their campus and, and, uh, make those decisions at the, at the individual school campuses.
And so with the tax credits, um, can you explain the change in that where you cannot, um, designate it for a specific area?
Yeah, it's a little bit unfortunate that, uh, band is co-curricular, um, and since we give credit for band, um, the, uh, tax credits require that it be extracurricular, and, and so, uh, there are, um, some unfortunate, um, consequences to that, and, and band happens to be one of them.
Okay, thank you.
But just, just for clarification, so essentially, we're not making them say, we need this much money for this, this much money for that, we're just saying, you have a chunk, here it is, and that's the reason. So they're getting just a basic, and then our expectation is, is that they're going to, they're gonna utilize those funds for these type of additional needs as they come up.
That is correct.
I guess, I guess to your point, though, how much is allocated to each school for capital?
President Fisher, Ms. Tweedy, it's based on the number of students, uh, at the, at the campus and the type of, um, the configuration of the school, so high school different than elementary.
Can, can you, can you give us that or provide us with information so we understand how much capital? Because I'm sure that, I, or, I guess I'm not sure, but I would assume, maybe if a principal's not allocating money to capital, there's another, or to ban capital money, there might be other needs that need.
Yeah.
Jim, uh, cap, the, the allocation of capital is a relatively new experience, so it, we have had no capital. So, so the, the campuses, as well as everybody else, have been starving for capital funds, so it, it comes probably as no surprise that there would be a tuba that wouldn't be in disrepair or something for years of having not had capital. Um, in capital allocations to campuses, two years, this is the third, or one year, this is the second?
This is the second, I believe.
Yeah, see, this is, this is only the second allocation of any capital for, for campuses, so you, you, we are well behind the eight ball, uh, in all kinds of ways, but, but we certainly can, um, show you the, the formula and the allocation.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Yeah, and, and just, uh, um, I don't think Deer Valley School District is unique in this, uh, regard when it comes to, uh, having, uh, many capital needs that are unfunded. The district additional assistance that would be the capital dollars that we would use is cut by more than eighty-five percent, so we receive about fifteen percent, maybe even less than fifteen percent when they recalculate it, um, each year, um, of the, uh, formula allocation for district additional assistance. So even though we're making an allocation to our schools, um, it's with only fifteen percent of what the formula would otherwise generate for a dis, our, our district, and again, that's every district in the state.
Yes, Maria Leva, um, again, my topic is on capital, thank you for the discussion. Um, I would like to respectfully request that, what if the board members maybe ask? I know in the, in the annual financial report or AFR, that the capital amount, you get the what was budgeted, let's just say five million, and then the actual what was spent. I think, um, if one of you were to request or as a board were to request, how every department was budgeted their capital and what they actually spent from the departments and even down to the schools, what their allocation was and what, what they actually spent and maybe what they have as a remaining balance, might help, because it is like Dr. V stated, it is a relatively new thing. We don't get capital and MNO separated anymore from the state. Our capital budget is what we make of it, so, um, maybe just understanding where we're spending it, or, or looking at the goal books with what the schools have in their reserves or in, in their overall accounts, might help to, um, bring those things to light. Thank you.
And we get that information?
Um, for just, uh, the most recent year?
At, at least, yeah. Yeah.
Certainly.
President Fisher, members of the board, I actually have a sample of my capital budget, if you'd like to see what we've allocated as a school, um, and I also have a sample of the addendas that I do on my campus and what budgets they come out of, and I'm happy to share them with you.
Sure. Can you plug it in and? Probably not.
I uh there there isn't. Um the uh instead of just looking at a single school, I'd be happy to share the allocation for all the schools, so you'll get a a sense for it.
Thank you.
Um being a member of the NST last year, I know we talked about the Prop one-two-three funds, and I remember several million dollars going to capital or to um pay yourself back, the district back for the years of not getting funded. So perhaps we could um look at that money, because every year, we're getting replenished those couple million dollars that he has into savings account. Could you explain that, Mr. Miglerino, to the to everybody?
Yeah, wait, we we need to know what question you want.
What's her name? She didn't identify herself either.
The million dollars, okay, we have one on Prop one-two-three funding. I don't have my folder with me, I didn't bring it.
Can you state your full name just for the record?
Excuse me?
Just state your full name for the record.
Linda Slavic.
Okay.
I was on NST last year, and my question is, um if we could reiterate what happened to the millions of dollars, um we had some money put aside for raises and some set aside for um of, you know, each of our groups. And then there was a set aside that the district took for um we put, they took several million dollars into accounts. So every year, when we get Prop one-two-three money, we have two or three million dollars um designated to go into these accounts. And I just would like to explain again what that money was for.
I I think I know the question. I believe I I know the question. I'm gonna take a stab at it, and maybe Ms. Slava can uh yeah tell me if I've answered the um uh the point she's trying to make. So we did receive fiscal year sixteen Prop one-two-three money, but we got it in June. And so uh we allocated those funds uh between two different um needs. One of those was a one-time longevity payment to our staff, and that was about half of the anticipated uh money that we received. Um and the other half, or three-point-one million dollars, was allocated to capital one-time expenses. Uh again, because in fiscal, we got the money so late, uh due to the timing of the election, we allocated those funds to one-time expenditures, and then all of the fiscal year seventeen and future year Prop one-two-three monies uh were allocated um through the NST process, uh and and um a recommendation was developed for ongoing Prop one-two-three uh funds. There is an additional um and there was a lot the going on last year, so um to to make sure that everybody is clear, we did, because we did not have capital dollars available to us, as part of the MNO override, we did pay our, I use the term, we paid ourselves back by, we had shifted the small amount of district additional assistance that the district did get, was all moved into MNO. When the MNO override passed by fifteen percent, we did carve out a small amount of capital dollars uh in our district additional assistance to remain in capital. It had been previously moved all into uh into MNO, and that is an ongoing uh process. In fact, the last of the uh million dollars is shown here uh on the revenue changes, uh to be able to uh get to that four million dollar budget that we that I mentioned, we we are planning for for fiscal year eighteen. Um so the ongoing Prop one-two-three money was allocated into salary and positions, um but the fiscal year sixteen dollars was split between one-time expenditures. Longevity pay for uh employees, about half, and the 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 balance went to textbook adoptions, a million dollars for bus replacements, and then a million dollars for other capital needs uh for the district.
I think you sent us a report on that a couple Fridays ago, yes?
I, yes, I think it might even be included in what I i- in the packet, maybe, or it was in the previous Friday update. It was in the previous one, I'm sorry.
Fund state your name for the record.
Hey, I'm Kristy Cooper, and my question is about the one percent salary increase, because I know that at one of the board meetings, um uh Mr. Miglerino had stated, you know, possibly a half percent. Um I was kinda looking at that and looking at the healthcare increase that they are talking about, charging teachers twenty dollars a month, um in order to keep the, to continue with their healthcare that they have now. So just to put it in perspective, in case anyone has ever, you know, like really looked at it, like a brand-new teacher coming that has worked in our district, making thirty-five thousand one hundred this year, if they are gonna get a one percent salary increase, the cost of healthcare is gonna be um seven-tenths of a percentage point. So their increase is only gonna be three-tenths of a percentage point with, and I'm not, I'm not a math specialist, I'm a reading specialist, so I'm not even sure if I'm saying this right, but they're going to increase by eleven cents an hour. Um and that's with a one percent. If you even consider doing a half a percent, they're gonna come out in the negative, and they're gonna, it'll cost them for the same healthcare, they're gonna be paying a dollar a month in the negative. When I um was speaking to my mother, who retired from Deer Valley over fifteen years ago, she had fifteen years in the district, and she made as much as I do now with twenty-three years in this school district, and she didn't even have a master's degree. And that was fifteen years ago. So I, and she only had fifteen years teaching experience. I have twenty-three years experience. Um this is fifteen years later, and she made as much money as I make now. So there's a real problem with the way we're paying our teachers, and I feel like when Mr. Miglerino was talking about a half a percentage, that we should be feel lucky if we get a one percentage, when that's not adequate for our employees. And I'm not just talking about teachers, I'm talking about all employees, but because I am a teacher, I'm speaking from what I know. So I'm, I did not think that one percent, when twenty-three years ago, when I was getting salary increases, I was getting about a two-point-six salary increase. And now, twenty-three years later, we're looking at between a half and a one, and it's not even really a one percent when you're looking at you're already going to be charging us for healthcare. So again, we're gonna be taking a loss. So when they're calculating that one percent, they're not looking at that one percent over what the increase of the healthcare is going to be. It's not going to be a one percent. So I hope everyone looks at that when you really think about the salary increases. Thank you.
So um I see on the the list not included, there's question marks by the Classroom Site Fund, which is Fund thirteen, and um I believe uh it was, and correct me if I'm wrong, um originally negotiated that forty-one percent of the Fund thirteen went to certified salaries. Okay, um I believe some of our neighboring districts, like Peoria and Paradise Valley, fund a hundred percent of those monies, ninety-five percent of those monies towards teacher salaries.
Not everyone's salaries, I think.
Everyone's, okay. I I don't wanna just say teachers, I just say employees, because it includes everyone. I think, given the difficulties that we've had with retaining teachers and recruiting teachers, and and maybe HR can speak to this a little bit, um I think it's extremely important that we do find a way to give a sal- a significant salary increase to our employees. Um because I, I mean, it it doesn't matter how great the textbooks are, this isn't Hogwarts, they're not gonna jump up and teach themselves. I I I just, to me, that that is a is a priority. I mean, they're all important to fund, but I think that is a priority. And and is it possible to change the percentage or the allocation of that Fund thirteen? Would that make a difference in our ability to pay employees more?
Uh President Fisher.
That was a very long-winded question, I apologize.
Um President Fisher and Ms. Frank, uh one of the things that's included in the in the packet is the actual approved uh Classroom Site Fund plan uh for the district. Um there are two components that go directly into uh teacher salaries out of Fund thirteen. So we have the fort- the the famed forty-one point eight percent, and then there's a a fixed dollar amount of uh just over one-point-five million dollars. So the combination of those two, it's over seventy-two percent of of Fund thirteen is going directly into teacher salary, uh base salary um uh amounts. The balance is used for a a sundry of other district needs, but still obligated to meet the requirements of the Classroom Site Fund statute. Uh there are limitations on how that money can be spent. Uh most of that is professional development um for our teaching staff. Uh to answer your question directly, uh yes, that amount is established by the board approving the Classroom Site Fund plan annually, and determining how much of that money should be used for whatever purpose um the board uh seems fit.
So to that point, um so then, based on the the information you've provided us here tonight, seventy-two point three percent with those two buckets is going directly to teacher pay from the Classroom Site Fund, the forty-one point eight percent plus the thirty-point-five percent for the teacher increase to hiring schedule. Um under state assessment intervention, there's a line that talks about teacher pay, and it, so we are paying teachers to to help with the state assessment, or can you help me understand that that line? Mr. Miglerino, please.
Uh President Fisher and Ms. O'Brien, the um so there is a detailed uh sheet that actually has
I apologize.
all of the items on it. Uh the title of it at the top says Revised Two Thousand Sixteen Seventeen Classroom Site Fund Menu Money Portion Plan.
Thank you so much, I skipped over that one.
Um and so uh it is organized to be able to provide, uh again, you know, this includes everything from our curriculum instruction specialists uh to professional development, um and then some some other uh specific needs. The the presentation that I provided is from the August twenty-third uh board meeting of the of uh two thousand sixteen, and uh it shows that all but ten-point-six percent of it um is not being paid to teachers. Admittedly, um the uh difference between the seventy-two point three percent and the ten-point-six percent uh is um paying for time that teachers are committing to that professional development. So having them come in uh over the summer months or a weekend or something like that uh to uh to further hone their craft.
That's an additional investment into our teachers, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Frank, one of one of the other things, I think, too, uh each district goes about creating its salary, um i- in however it develops over time. So our salary, much like the districts that you have, we have a competitive salary to to those districts. We get there differently than some. Some spend a hundred percent of their dollars on the base pay, but they spend less of somewhere else, so they're taking care of those needs. It's it's just the way this fund or this district developed its competitive salary. So you can say, oh, somebody uses a hundred percent, and we only use seventy, or or whatever it is. But but the end result is a competitive salary to that district, they just happen to go to a different bucket to get it. Um and so I, it's, you know, we, Jim talks to his peeps all the time in in our neighboring districts. I talk to mine in the same way, and it, most of them go, yeah, that's kinda the way it developed over time, and.
Thank you for the information.
Ms. O'Brien, go ahead.
The amount that we are, another one page. The amount that we're, the one-point-six million on reduction of students, that is for fiscal year seventeen and anticipated for eighteen, or is that just the the hit we'll take for fiscal year seventeen?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Helps if I turn this in, especially my voice still hasn't recovered. Um President Fisher, Ms. O'Brien, uh that amount is per uh both reductions for
Okay.
fiscal year seventeen, reduction of students, and the anticipated reduction for fiscal year eighteen, uh just under one percent in the projection for next year.
Okay, thank you.
And I had one thing, too, and and maybe we could come up with recommendations for this. Um I do think, I I mean, unless a really high percentage of contracts get returned, we're gonna have a problem, because the colleges have not graduated enough people to fill fifty percent of the vacancies, so that's going to be a problem if we we can't get people to pick us over our neighbors. I mean, that's just the reality. So I was wondering, have we considered any potential benefits to attract employees that may not cost us as much? Like, for an example, could we offer before and after-school childcare at our cost? Like, we don't make a profit off that at all. That they get such a steep discount on before and after-care, that they couldn't match that somewhere else. So they want, if they have kids, not only do they wanna apply in our district, they wanna bring our kids to, their kids to our district, so it could increase enrollment, too. Um I don't know, just a thought. I mean, we got, we're i- we're gonna have to do it on the salary end or find other things, like what else could we offer people that would distinguish us?
To make 'em wanna come.
We're, we're gonna have a real problem. I mean, that's just the reality.
Mrs. Cooper, did you guys have a comment, or? Kristy, do you guys have a comment?
So when, I didn't know if Jim, or sorry, uh Mr. Miglerino was talking about um offering professional development during the summer, and that's where some of the money was going, and why it wasn't all given to the teachers. I'm not sure if I misunderstood that, but when we're spending so much money on on teacher professional development, we're really giving our teachers um, I don't know, more education to go somewhere else. It was, it seems to be, because they um, we we really do a great job, we have wonderful teachers. I know, because I get kids from other districts, and um they are never to par from when we get kids in district. And what we're, what we're finding is that if they're in our district for very long, they know that they can come here, get their years' experience, go to another district, and make a lot more money. So we are giving them all this training, and then we have to retrain every new teacher that we get. And so the quality of the teachers that we are getting are not near the quality of what we are giving away to the other districts, so that they can have great, wonderful teachers. So I, if we pay our teachers more, they would even be willing to probably get a lot of that professional development for free, and take it for free, if they were actually paid adequately, that they would feel it was worth their time to stay in our district. I spent years of taking free professional development, giving up my weekends, but at that time, I felt like I was being paid adequate salary. But in the last fifteen years, I have not made any more money. I am now nearing retirement, and I am not making near of what other teachers are making in other districts that are also nearing retirement. So it makes teachers in Deer Valley feel like we are not being appreciated. Um so if you would look at spending less on the professional development and more on the teacher salaries, I think everyone would be happier. Thank you.
Up to um Kristy's point, I I will say, the ten years I was in Deer Valley, I took advantage of every professional development opportunity there was, paid or unpaid, and Deer Valley had excellent professional development, which the county air quality department is now very appreciative of. So there is a a great deal of truth to her comments that um.
Yeah, and and to that point, I would just say that, you know, that's a very delicate balance, because to bring in, um we're going to have to bring in new teachers, no matter what, because of the number of vacancies. And it would be a huge disservice to our students to not sure that we're not, if we don't ensure we're properly developing our teachers. So while I don't um y- your comment, I I do understand it, and and I understand that there needs to be a good balance between pay, but we also need to make sure that we are properly developing those new teachers who are coming in, so that we are educating our teachers, so they can provide the best education. I I'm thanked often by a good friend who works with Washington Elementary. She's like, we love your teachers. I said, I I know, quit taking them, but we've gotta make sure that at the center I said, "I know, quit taking them, but we've gotta make sure that at the center, i- i- is to do right by the children a- and our staff, and by doing right by our staff, we're doing right by children." It's just a very delicate balance, and, um, I, I would, I'm gonna get on my soapbox just for a couple of seconds, if you will allow me. Um, I think most of you know, in this room, there is a war on public education. And if you're paying attention, they're starting to talk about the budget down at the Capitol. So, I would encourage you, if you have strong feelings about how your legislators should vote, that you let them know what it is you'd like them to do.
Well, to that point, Mrs. O'Brien, I would agree with you that we, we definitely need to, to train our teachers and make sure that they're well-trained. I think, um, I know for myself, there were paid opportunities and unpaid opportunities for professional development, so I think maybe what Ms. Cooper was referencing, um, was looking at reducing the, the paid opportunities, if there could be some savings there, still offering the development, maybe for performance pay, for, uh, professional responsibility hours or things of that nature. And, so, but, but I do agree, we do need, we do need the training.
And then, and then to that point too, I would say, um, the training, when it, when it takes place during the school day, we incur sub, we, the students, we incur that expense, and then we also, uh, incur a loss of educational quality in the classroom.
Well, and that's a point of clarity I wanted to make, was when we talk about doing the summer, the summer training where they can come in and be additionally paid, the, the purpose of that was so that we weren't paying subs and pulling them. We were listening to the voice of our teachers who said, "We don't want to be pulled out of class, we don't want our kids left with a sub." Um, and that was part of the reason we put that professional development in the summer, where they, it was an additional opportunity for us to not pay a sub, but pay our dedicated teacher, and not have a sub in a classroom, but to keep our dedicated teacher there. So, that was kind of the reason we did that.
And, and to.
Probably not. Although I did summer trainings for Professional Growth Credit, because I would get that into my base pay. So, anytime I had the opportunity, even if I had to pay some of the classes, I had to pay, like, thirty-five dollars, we'll do the math. I'm getting fifty dollars added to my base pay, so over time, I'm ahead, um, but, uh, so.
Ju- just to round, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Feigenheimer, but you might as well listen to me, and then we'll listen to you wrap it up in a way. Um, I want to make sure that, uh, when we don't pay people for things, they don't have to come, and I'm not willing to, um, risk, um, Classroom A to have somebody that's not going to go to the professional development, because I'm not paying you to go, I don't have to go. And then Classroom B gets the, um, benefit of those that do go. So, when we are talking about equity in education, equity in pay, equity every, anywhere, we need to make sure that we are as much as possible ensuring that there is equity, so.
Just, uh, two quick points. One, um, uh, remember that, uh, professional development sometimes means curriculum writing, lesson plan writing, not sit-get-training. Um, and Gail has a significant portion of the work done in the summer by teams of teachers in the content area, so the, so don't, when you're thinking of staff development, it's not automatically training like what we're talking about. So, that's the first thing. The second thing is, when you, when you look at this list, uh, the itemized list, just take a look, it's the, the reductions from the prior year. What, what we did last year was a, was a lot of what you're talking about. So, social studies reduced from forty thousand to twenty thousand this past year. Um, uh, language arts, uh, from eighty thousand to forty-five thousand, so there are, we've, we've tried to funnel monies into the priority areas where, where Gail most needed teams of teachers to come, work in the summer, creating, uh, our assessments, creating our, uh, scope, uh, sequence, um, uh, sample lessons, uh, those kinds of things. And so, uh, I think when you look into some of the detail, you'll see, you can kind of catch up with some of the things that have happened over the course of the last, um, budget development.
No, I mean, that's correct, I did work on some of the summer science assessment work teams, so I do know what you're talking about, yeah.
Ms. O'Brien?
Um, Mr. Miglerino, the, the line that says Proposition Two Oh Six Compensation Co- Compression, if, and there's question marks there, um, can we, is there a ballpark number that you could provide us later when you're providing some of the other information that would give us an idea what that might, number might look like, to alleviate some of that compression?
Um, President Fisher, Ms. O'Brien, I don't know that we formulated exactly what that would look like. Um, I think the intent of adding it to the list, uh, and I hope I'm not overstepping my, um, uh, my responsibilities here, was that we know that i- this is a future concern, uh, more so than it is an immediate concern.
Okay.
Um, as the, uh, minimum wage, uh, continues to increase. We know it has created an issue already with compression, but it gets exponentially a much greater concern when you get to twelve dollars per hour. Um, for next year, we're just, you know, we adjust, it ratchets to ten dollars and fifty cents. So, one of the things the Negotiation Solution Team, uh, has at least discussed, I don't want to say we considered anything we've discussed, is potentially, um, using that one point four million dollars, or whatever is allocated for a raise. Uh, again, that's just a representative amount, um, so that we can do some quick math with it. The, uh, uh, that those people that would be scheduled to get a Prop Two Oh Six increase would potentially not participate in the salary increase, because they would be getting a Prop Two Oh Six increase, um, in January. And, uh, even those people that might be making, let's say, ten dollars and forty cents an hour, um, uh, this is what has been, you know, at least considered a- a- as part of the framework, is not giving them a raise, even though they're only gonna go from ten forty to ten fifty and have to wait half of a year to get to that, uh, salary increase, because they would receive yet another increase greater than any other percentage that we anticipate for other employees in the following year. Because remember, it ratchets all the way up to twelve dollars an hour. So, um, it'd be a way of trying to, uh, ensure that there's not, um, that, that, whatever amount we can allocate for a raise for everybody else, uh, is, uh, provided to the greatest extent to everybody else. The, the Prop Two Oh Six salary increase is, uh, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the ten fifty is showing up, uh, on, I hope this, uh, we have, we have, it's in the, it's contained within the Classified Staff Salary Changes, uh, but it i- it is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to move from ten dollars to ten fifty for just the classified employees.
Can we go ahead and go on to, let's look at the, the areas that you, um, have brought for options to consider for reductions? I, I think, I mean, this is. Not enough, I know, it's not enough, but, um. And, and I did ask that you, um, had sent us the CTE information, um, but, without the, the CTE textbook adoption, um, we don't have any programs that are gonna be in danger of anything, it didn't look like to me, correct?
Gail? President Fisher, is CTE programs in danger?
Yeah, I mean, uh, because we're, if we're, we're gonna forego the CTE textbook adoption, um, right, yeah. Do we have adequate, um, to, to continue with our CTE coursework? In other words, you know, there's sometimes you adopt because it's nice to have, sometimes you adopt because it's changed and you need the new.
President Fisher, I would say we could, um, we could go another year. That would put us, I, I think Mr. Miglerino in one of the, uh, most recent Friday updates provided our CTE courses, and when the, the last adoption date was for each of those courses. Um, extending another year, uh, would be uncomfortable, but not unacceptable in, in our current, um, financial situation. And, and I think, um, for this one year, that is the, that is the only things we have put forward for our adoption. And we do have an adoption cycle, um, so this was the year for CTE next year. When we go to the following year, then we, we start looking again at some of our other content areas, um, because their adoption cycle comes up at that point.
Right, no, well, yeah, 'cause that's what I'm referencing, that, that when, when we were saying that. I didn't see anything that looked like it was, you know, cutting-edge, that if we didn't have a new book, it was gonna be a significant issue. So, so there's nothing else beyond that.
But.
Yes, Ms. Hardway?
So, if we were to put off the CTE, that would make it uncomfortable for the students and, or the staff. It doesn't make the need for go, to go away, and then what we would be doing is just doubling up, um, a cycle of, uh, textbook adoption, correct?
President Fisher, Ms. Ordway, it, it could mean doubling up, or it could mean pushing everything, um, back another year. And we have done that in the past, when, when we have been, um, short capital funds. Um, we have pushed adoptions back.
But what's coming up next is, um, core content area, or what, what would the next?
I would have to look at our adoption cycle and, and get that to you.
And then we're increasing carryforward, additional cost, additional.
Well, I would agree with it.
Uh, because I guess the point is, I'm trying to see if the, the board is comfortable with these suggestions, we can, can move forward with, we're comfortable with this, if we are, and I'm not saying we have to be, but I'm just saying, if the board as a whole is comfortable, this at least gives Mr. Miglerino a jumping-off point. Um, we gave, we have, what, you have six, seven suggestions of areas that we're looking into for potential reductions? Now, I'm looking at what you have written, so, I mean, it's, uh, but, but tonight, the point is to give him some kind of guidance.
And I would say to the N S T, I would at least favor a one percent, but I do think with one percent, you're gonna have some empty classrooms next year, so I don't know, we have to come up with a backup plan to teach those rooms.
And I, I, I would prefer at least a one percent, but I will tell you that we did, in our district, did get our, our notification of raises. Our certified and classified are getting a point six, and administrators are getting a point two-five, um, which I kind of laughed, 'cause that gives me an extra seven bucks every other pay period, so I can get a coffee. Um, a- and, and so, so all, I just want to point out that all districts across are getting that, are having the same struggle.
And that district that you work for does get, um, DSEG money and has extra.
Yeah, we have, and we have extra, exactly, so, but what we, we are having to.
And you have a higher salary schedule, you'll have less, um, empty classrooms next year. I don't want my child sitting in a room with no teacher.
I, I don't either, but I'm just saying, we also can't give what, we can't give more than what the district, we can't give more than what the, than what the state gives us. Um, so if we, it's, it's at least a place to start, in my opinion.
I, I think if there is any way at all that we could fund more than one percent, I think we would be well-advised to do that. And, um, I, I'm, you're getting a raise, county employees, from what I've heard, are not getting a raise at all. But at the same time, um, I make a lot more money working for the county than I did for Deer Valley. During my ten years in Deer Valley, there were some years at the beginning where I got very significant raises, and that was followed by years with significant cuts. So, by the time I got to the end of my career here, I was maybe about ninety-five cents per paycheck.
Right.
Ahead, and so, I think we have to look at the big picture, and not just certified, but all employees, because for those, those employees who have been loyal and have stuck, stuck it out, uh, they have endured cuts. Um, and, and yes, they got a, an increase last year with, with the M and O override and, and with the Prop One, Two, Three money. Um, but we have a teacher shortage, and in any other profession, that would mean people would be doing their best to be competitive. And I realize that, that we have challenges that other professions don't have. I'm just saying, from my point of view, we would be well-advised to give the highest raise that we can. And, and I think we should look at more than one percent.
I believe that we are all on the same page, that we would love to give as much as possible. Uh, but I, I do think we also need to look the big picture of, do we have, do we have more than that? Right now, you know, we don't even have that.
And to your point, though.
But we're gonna do it anyways, and if, and, and find the money, and then, if we can do more, I, I don't, I don't believe we would, any of us would want to give our employees less.
But to your point, I, I, and Mr. Miglerino can look into this, but I heard Peoria's giving one percent, P V's giving at least one percent, but looking at an additional, those are probably our two closest competitors. I mean, if we are gonna give one percent, I would just like to be presented with a backup plan as to what we're gonna do with our empty classrooms next year.
If that question, if that was a question, uh, that, that's the same information I have regarding our, um, neighboring districts, uh, both Peoria and Paradise Valley.
Okay. Right, and I, and that's what I'm saying, but, for tonight, we can't say, oh, we're gonna give a tw- twelve percent, we don't have it. We can say that we can shoot for a one percent, and we're gonna agree to this, and, and see what we find with the suggestions we've made. We can't overcommit funds that we don't have.
No, we can't, but N S T has asked us for direction, so we can give direction.
Right, so that's why I'm, I'm trying to see if we can agree to, to this recommendation of starting.
I can certainly agree to that as a starting, um, and I realize I'm, I can't give direction for the whole board, although I like giving directions. I, I, I would ask that N S T look to see if at least, at least a one and a half would be possible.
Well, but here, here's the problem I have, N S T is not our budget committee, we have a budget. We can give them one percent to see, to go with, um, but we have to know what we have to offer. Um, so, I mean, how does, I don't know how the rest of the board feels. We can't get N S, N S T can't decide that we're gonna cut the remainder of our budget to do something different. There, that's, there's negotiations and there's, and there's budget, this is budget. Ms. O'Brien?
I'd like to, um, I think tonight we've asked for a lot of information from Mr. Miglerino, and I think that these, the items on this page are, are reasonable. Um, but I do think that I want to be able to process the other information that we've asked for, and, um, a- a- and meet again. I, this is a, a long process, I think there's some other things that I, I have some other questions, um, regarding some numbers that I'll, I'll email, because I, I know that they're not available probably right off the top of Jim's head, and, and so I'll email those and ask that they're shared with all of us. Um, but I, I, I think we're gonna have to come again a- as a group and, and talk about this. I'd love to give as big of a raise as possible, um, o- of course, but again, we, we can't give away what we don't have, and, and there's a big picture of retaining students and ensuring that kids are, are staying in our classes and are continuing to, to come into our, our classes, which speaks to some of the programs we have and the offerings. I think this district has done an incredible job over a very long period of time of keeping things like band and art and, and all of the extracurriculars that, uh, educate the whole child. So, um, I applaud the future board, the, the previous boards who, who worked on that, and, and I want to maintain that while, while respecting our staff, so. Uh, I'm not opposed to this, but I, I'm not ready to say, yeah, I'm in, and, and I'm voting on all of this.
Okay, Ms. Hardway, do you have a?
Do I have a what?
A position on all of this.
Got lots of stuff.
Do you have an, an opinion?
For N S T to discuss, I mean, are, are we looking at agreeing to the options to consider? Uh, are, are we giving direction on that, that we would be in agreement to cut the, um, CTE books, that, that page? I'm not ready to, to commit to a number on a salary increase. I'm definitely gonna commit to an increase, I, I wouldn't commit to a number right now, because we just asked for a, a line-by-line, uh, budget, uh, audit, so it seems silly to me to, to give a number. Um, so I, I can tell you, for the budget options to consider, yes, okay, for me, that, uh, right now, that two million, three hundred fifty thousand dollars, I guess, would be something that you guys could count on me to agree to, but for this other page, I, I can't really say yes, no on it until we have all those other figures that we just asked for, 'cause there's plenty of figures that we asked for. And the, the, the other thing, to Darcy, I had asked a couple of years ago, each year, about increasing the, um, about increasing the, um, discount, because I think the discount for community services, um, for the employees is ten percent. Maybe it's fifteen percent, I'm not sure. However, we've gotta remember, and, and I'm not saying this is a, a plus or a minus, it's just a piece of information, that when we do that, and we cut it by thirty percent or fifty percent, which is a great number, then we also are taking from that to balance our budget. So, I'm not saying that the employees would make up that one million dollars, but it is gonna take money out of it. So, that might be something to look at, too. And that's all the stuff I have.
All the stuff you got, okay. Ms. Cooper? Oh, James, he's sending us.
Sorry. Um, my comment is, um, in response to, uh, President Fisher. When you're comparing our district to your district, last year, I was looking at other districts and their hiring schedules, and I even did it with you in, in presence of yourself. I would've got thousands of dollars more if I would've went to your district, brand-new, as a new employee, just with my years of experience and my education. So, when you're saying, oh, well, we only got a point six, but you make a lot more money than any of the teachers in Deer Valley. So, it's different. It's not apples to apples. Because in Deer Valley, we have not, we have kept the programs at the expense of our teachers' salaries. Because our teachers have been so dedicated, and because we stuck it out, and because we did such a great job, we have remained the district that we are. But teachers are at the point where we are fed up with sacrificing ourselves, our livelihood, and our families, so that this district could remain great, so that we can continue to be treated like we are. So, until teachers are being treated as a priority in this district, without all the excuses, well, we need this and we need that, you can get all the programs you want, but without teachers and qualified people to do, teach your programs, you will not remain the A-plus district you are. So, you can put more demands on us, but we will dwindle away until you will have no one in your classrooms, unless the district office is planning to go down into the classrooms and start using your degrees and your professional development to teach our classrooms. I suggest that everybody look at putting teachers and its employees as a priority, and quit using everything else as an excuse not to give us what we earned. Thank you.
I, I understand that. I wanna make one, one point, 'cause I do understand that. And I will tell you, no, I do not make more than, than most of the teachers here. Just me personally, I can't speak for anyone else. But the point I'm making is also, we get, what is it, seven thousand, eight thousand per student in Deer Valley? In Phoenix Union, they get twelve thousand or thirteen thousand per student. The point isn't that we don't value our teachers. If we could give the biggest raise possible, we would. But the reality is, we don't have the funding. The money's not coming in. It's not that teachers aren't a priority, they are a priority. And, and, and like Ms. O, to Ms. O'Brien's point, we have to get the legislature off their pocketbooks. The money, if, w- we want to put as much money as possible. I'm with you. I don't want any new programs if it's just gonna be more. If, if it's just gonna be development somewhere that's not gonna be beneficial. That's not even what we're talking about. I obviously don't want that either. We do wanna value our employees. It's why we pushed for what we did last year. It is why I, I did sit with you last year and go through all this. Because one hundred percent, I believe, every member of this board, and I would say this administration, does want to retain our good teachers. It sucks that we are in a position that we can't afford. I don't think there's a teacher in the state of Arizona that is paid what they're worth, even in the most high-paying district. But we also can't give what we don't have. It has to be coming in. And we, right now, have declining enrollment, which has, which has put us where we don't. And I know, they're running to charters, they're running to other places. W- we've got to stop that. But right now, what I would love to see is that we at least commit to putting as much as possible to our, to our employees. And I think that's what we're all trying to do.
It's hard, because we've heard this same story every single year for about the last fifteen years. So, the record has not changed. We stand up here every single year, and we listen to the same excuses why you can't pay your teachers and pay your employees. So, I, I, you're right, I don't know what the answer is, other than when we have no teachers left to teach, because they will be going to other districts, because somehow, somewhere, other districts come up with the money. So, I don't know.
Ms. Leyva?
Yes, Maria Leyva. So, you know, our goals should be rigorous. And if, if everybody around us is giving a point six or over a point, one point oh, then why don't we shoot for the moon and end up somewhere in the clouds? Why don't we go for two percent? And if, as, we can get as close as we can to that, just like our student goals. We have a high, very high rigorous standard. Because, you know, like Christie was making that point, parents crave consistency. And they like to see the same teachers at the beginning of school in August as when they left in May. Turnover at some schools is so high that the parents may not even recognize the, the teachers they're walking by in the halls in, in August. And they wonder, what happened to those teachers? Or I know that Ms. Smith, you know, might've retired, but we really should be looking at that. We really should be trying to bring those teachers back, the ones that are going to those other districts, the ones where Phoenix Union, they're starting salaries over forty thousand. Um, we, we really need to, if we're, if people are gonna work basically where they live, then let's offer more and bring some of our Deer Valley teachers back into Deer Valley, probably where they live and where they'd like to be again, by offering a higher salary than everybody around us. And I think if we strive for that goal, let's get somewhere above it. But to, to, that's not how you negotiate, you don't, you don't start from the middle and then work your way down. You start from the top and end up somewhere in the middle. Thank you.
Ms. Ordway?
Jim, I've got another request for you. Would you be able, as you do with the salary comparison with our, um, comparative districts, do a benefit comparison also? Because perhaps if we look at that and see, um, what the difference is between the benefit package and the salary package, maybe, um, we might not want such a, a good benefit package and, and have that money put straight into salary. So, if you could do that comparison, that would be awesome. Thank you.
Oh, to that point, too, um, consider the, um, benefit package we were looking at last night with the new restricted. And then the other thing, when we compare our salaries to other districts, could we look at the median salary in all the districts and not the average, so we don't have, like, outliers distorting the number? I just, like, every, we could just pull median. I know this other districts maybe, and they, and you can report it mean, like, the other districts, but I would wanna know the median salary, if that's possible.
Uh, President Fisher, uh, Ms. Tweedy, unfortunately, I don't have the raw data to be able to, um, report median. I certainly could for us. Average salary is reported on the Auditor General's report.
Uh, uh, do you have any friends that'd be willing to share their median salary?
Maybe if you weren't mean.
Don't be mean, ask them.
Don't, don't be mean.
You look like the kinda person that has a friend or two.
I, I think it's also actually interesting to look at the mode, to see which salary is the most frequently found in the, in the data set.
He doesn't have the information for the mean.
That, like, the mood, we could do the mood, too. It might be a low one if there's a lot.
Or, see, Mrs. Fisher, for, can I ask a clarifying question?
Have anything else planned for the rest of the week, did you, Mr. Miglerino?
Yeah, yes, Ms. O... Ms., Ms. O'Brien?
Mr. Miglerino, will that, um, the analysis for the benefit package that Ms. Ordway kindly requested, would that include, um, benefit, or retirement, sorry, retirement benefits in, in that cost?
Uh, President Fisher, Ms. O'Brien, um, the, the easiest way to compare, uh, benefits is to look at the aggregate dollar spent, uh, by our comparable districts. And, uh, it's a little bit more difficult to actually compare plans themselves, like, to get to the level of deductibles or co-pays, uh, things of that level. Um, because, uh, we don't know what share of the, of the benefit is being, um, burdened by the employee versus the district. Uh, so we can look at the aggregate spend, just to give us, uh, some type of comparison. And, uh, it will be dependent on whether or not the district has retiree, uh, benefit offerings for their employees. For example, Scottsdale School District does not, they're one of our comparable districts, but they do not provide a retirement, a continuing, um, uh, benefit for retirees on, on their benefit, uh, plan. So, there won't be, there's not a specific place to report O P E B liability. But, uh, since I'll be phoning a friend, um, or two, I'll, uh, I can certainly ask for, um, their, uh, O P E B liability at, at the same time.
And let us know how many friends you have left by the time you're done getting all of our questions answered.
And how many cookies or treats we need to leave on your desk before spring break starts?
Don't work spring break. Yes?
So, again, I'm Marcy Morrison, the social worker at Berry-Gowater. Um, I think this might be about the time that I can, can add something in, the rest of what I wanted to say earlier. Um, and not just because it's School Social Work Week, but what a great thing that Ann had brought up, um, because I, it, it hasn't been acknowledged, so that I'm flattered that it was. I, I kind of wanted to, uh, being my fifth year here, and next year will be my thirtieth year as a school social worker. I'm only twenty-two, but it, it will be my thirtieth year. When I came here, I had to negotiate my position, because it was the only position as a school social worker in the district. Since then, we've had another social worker come on. I wanted to take a moment to educate the board and everybody, everybody, um, what a social worker does, what a school social worker does. I'm not just a social worker, I am a school social worker. So, I wanted to also just send the board some information, uh, to look over, just so that you have what a school social worker is, and especially 'cause I'm losing one, I could tell right now. Um, so I, I do wanna send something by email, if that would be okay, because I don't wanna take up a ton of time, but I do wanna take up a little bit of time, so that you understand what we do. We are under the exempt employee, um, we are certified. Um, we are, school social workers are a related service specialist, just like psychologists, speech and language pathologists, O Ts, P Ts. We are related service, that's what, that's what we do. Um, counselors are, and I was just clarifying, are not related. They're in a, they're in another category that we all kinda fit into, to, um, to an extent, because we, e- even though I know you, you had mentioned, um, that you value, you know, the, the staff and the certified staff, I, I know, and we're not gonna rehash this, but we know that we were all left out last year. I was part of what the board called, which I thought was very, um, insulting, but part of the zero club. So, I got a fourteen-hundred-dollar, um, because everyone, all certified staff got fourteen-hundred, but I was part of what the board called the zero club from last year, because I didn't get anything else on top of that. Um, I was told because I have a stipend, that that happened, and because there was supposed to be equity in things, even though it was my twenty-ninth year at the time. And it was, it was pretty insulting, it was, but anyway, I'm not gonna get into that, 'cause it's, it's a whole nother conversation I know, that I know you're aware of. Um, as a school social worker, I have a master's degree, I had a rigorous program, just like all the, the other related service people, like the psychologists, the O Ts, P Ts, speech and language. I have a licensed clinical social work certification. I am a clinician. That's what I do. That's what, if you are a school social worker, you are, if you have an L C S W, it's like getting your highly qualified teacher, but, but, you know, i- in the same type of respect, I guess. Um, the L C S W, the Licensed Clinical Social Work Certification, I can go out and do private practice, and I can bill for it. That's, that's what an L C S W is able to do nationally. It's the equivalence of the N C S P, which is a National Certified School Psychologist, what they get. And it's also the equivalent of the C C C, the Certification of Clinical Competence, Competency for Speech and Language and the Hearing, um, Hearing Pathologists. As a school social worker, I've also had, because I came from another state, and Arizona didn't do it yet, yet it is a national certification, I als- Arizona's a little bit behind the times, I've noticed. Um, I also have a School Social Work Specialist Certification. What that does, it's a specific certification that allows s- uh, social workers to understand the very specific needs and information that a social worker has, that they need in a school setting. So, there's very specific classes I had to take to be actually a school social worker when I was going to school. Um, trying to skip over some of this, 'cause I don't wanna spend a lot of time. But, uh, my internship was a full year at a school. It was six hun- six hundred contact hours in a school setting for a full year. I had another four hundred hours of field experience. It was very similar, though I did my undergrad in psychology, it was very similar to the psychology, the psychologist's and master's program. The, um, as a school social worker, the service priorities that we do in a school, and I'm just gonna name the, the eleven categories, emergency crisis intervention. Um, so, school social workers serve mandates for I E P students. Um, there is all the teaming and being on all the specific teams, like the M T S S, P L Cs, five oh fours, all that. Um, consultation with parents, teachers, administration, uh, school personnel, et cetera. Referrals to outside agencies, um, with all the financial assistance, um, all the social, emotional, behavioral assistance that they might need. Uh, program development, developing school-wide programs to create positive educational culture and environment, such as peer mediation, bullying, citizenship, conflict resolution, et cetera. Liaison work, um, which the homeschool community, um, home visits, P, uh, parent-teacher organizations, if the school has that. Um, staff in services, to educate the staff on the me- needs of the large number of students that they have. Classroom interventions, going into classrooms, teaching different kinds of lessons. I also have a therapy dog that comes in, that also helps to teach those classroom lessons. Group work with parents or students, um, parenting classes, and other parenting, uh, other parenting education opportunities. Also, group counseling and individual counseling. So, in order, basically, those are the things that a school social worker nationally should be doing. I do have something that I'm gonna send to you, and I'm just gonna let you know what it is ahead of time. It is a, a table that I gave, um, Mr. Hoover when I first came here. And it goes through what teachers that have their, um, it's called their N B C T. Thank you, National Board, National Board. Um, it goes through what a social, if a social worker has their L C S W, Licensed Clinical, it goes through what a speech and language pathologist with their certification of a clinical co- competency. And it goes through the National Certified School Psychologist, N C S P. Um, and it categorizes everything that each one of those categories have to earn, um, that certification. So, I will send that to you, so you see how rigorous, um, it is to be a social worker at a school. So, something that I came across this year, which I don't know why I've never seen before. I don't know why, I guess maybe because of everything going on with, um, kinda being lost, you know, uh, from the, the, uh, being in the zero club, I guess. I started looking into some things. I noticed that school social workers are on a, um, okay, the hiring schedule, it says other professional staff and principals and assistant principals to, for twenty sixteen-seventeen. School social workers are in the category of psychologist interns, nurse interns, C T E, I, I can't read the rest of this, I'm sorry, but those are the biggest ones that I was like, wow. Starting pay thirty-four, eight oh nine, which is under, um, every, all the related staff, which is under the counselors, which are under all the teachers, every single one of them. Then I looked at another one, and it's schedu- uh, Appendix B, Certified Hiring Schedule, where it says the same exact amount. So, I'm like, I, my insult from what happened to being forgotten is part of... So I'm like, I, my insult from what happened to being forgotten, as part of all the people that were forgotten, it just blew my mind that I was, I, I don't know how I got in that category, I never noticed it, I never knew. I was, I guess I was very naive. When I came in, I not only have my LCSW, but I also had a QCSW, which is a Qualified School Social Work, um, certification, and a Diplomat. Diplomat is the highest licensure, clinical licensure you can possibly have as a social worker. So I, it just kind of blew my mind. And then, I, I guess I wanted you guys to know this, because I don't think you guys know that. I don't think you're, you're aware of what's going on. I just started talking to the DVEA this year about it, about it, and I just want equity. And even if it's a stipend that, that I might get, that maybe my, the other, um, social worker might get, I, I, it's not that I'm asking for more, I'd love for some of that, that the stipend to be in the base pay. Because I don't understand why the other related service people have, there's a higher base pay, where mine is all stipend, and then you get 2% of this for this, and then something else comes one year and you get 1% for that, you know, and...
I, I understand what you're saying, and I do think that we're trying to figure out, and, and that you were one of the groups that were included on the, um, performance, with the recommendation from the N S T. And I'm hoping that when Mr. Miglerino looks through it...
Well, yeah, well, and, and Jim, we, we, I know we discussed this in the past, I, I, I don't recall the board ever calling anyone the zero group, 'cause you're right, that sounds very insulting. It may have gotten started out there by someone else, I don't believe a board member would ever call someone that, 'cause we do value our employees. But, but we did, um, Jim, we did make sure that they're included in the considerations of a group, correct? 'Cause I know we went back and forth with this a lot, to make sure they were.
President Fisher, yes, we have developed a, an employee matrix where the representation of all the positions in the district are identified.
Okay, yeah, 'cause we, we, 'cause I know that was a big concern of all board members, both the, the board members who are no longer with us, and then, and the current board members, that we did not miss any groups. Um, so we did make sure that they're in there. Um, I don't know that we can make any promises beyond any, beyond anything that's negotiated, but, um, I do know that, that the groups that were missed are being considered, definitely in there.
And they're on the list for the recommendations on the, uh, prof, and, and I don't know if that'll happen, but they're on the list, and we're looking for money, and we are considering everything on that.
Correct.
And, and then, um, whichever, I'm guessing they went under DVEA to make sure that you guys that were not under DVEA, make sure that you, um, give them all that information, so those groups that they are not familiar with, they are familiar with, so they can negotiate for you as well as the teachers.
Okay. And then just the final thing I, I'm gonna send to you is the standards for school social workers. There are standards that are in here. I could show you that the psychologists also have standards, but, you know, I just wanna show you some of the things that are very important for school social workers to be doing in the school setting, and how we can help with the social, emotional, you know, it, it's, you have to do social, emotional stuff now in schools.
And thank, thank you for everything you do for our students.
Yeah, we, we do, we, you know, look forward to anything you do send us. We, we always do a review, what is sent to us.
I just don't wanna be forgotten, there's only two of us in the whole district.
We won't forget you.
I don't wanna be forgotten, it's, it's in a, yeah, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Steve Lund, President Fisher, the board, Dr. Weitenheimer. I was just thinking, as I'm sitting here, listening to all of the conversations, that there's a piece of information that I, I hear in the N S T Committee Board, when we do our meetings, I hear this frequently, we talk about the monies that are available and the monies that are being spent, and you can divide those all up into different percentages. But I think it'd be important to make sure that others know that of our budget, 85% of it goes to salary and benefits. 15% goes to the operational things in the district. So as a perspective, if you take the 200 million, and I'm gonna round numbers a little bit, but if you take the 200 million dollar budget we have, and you figure 15% of that goes to operational, that's 30 million dollars. If you take a 2% raise, and I'll round up a little, call 1% a million and a half, 2% three million, that's 10% of the operating dollars that we have. So to your point, it's difficult sometimes to find the money, because there's not that much of it left. I, I just am trying to point out that at 85% of our budget goes to salary and benefits. We, I think we do try very hard to find everything we can. And yes, I'm sure there are some things that could be done better, to make the salaries a little more, but I just wanted to make that a point, you know, that, that there's a lot of money that goes toward the salaries and benefits. And unfortunately, with what we get from the state, there's not always a lot of extra that we get to do anything with. So, thank you very much.
I appreciate you, um, coming and saying that, because it, it is something that we do deal with, and, um...
And, uh, President Fisher, just, uh, not to correct Mr. Lund, but, uh, 86.7, .7 was the last percentage. So, it's even...
It's even more.
It's even less than that.
And I will tell you, the Auditor General Report does reflect, when you look at our, our Auditor General Report, um, we are, we are keeping it very lean, and it is getting into the classroom, it's, we just don't have a lot of it. I believe we are at our, our end for this meeting, we're gonna have to get some updates and come back. Um, is there anything else that anyone wishes to go say before Ms. Tweedy floats away? Uh, Ms. Hardway?
Everybody have a great spring break!
Everybody have a great spring break.
And happy St. Patrick's Day, and... I'm kidding.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Can I have a second?
No move, I'll second, oh.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.